Mr. Molds, who's going to cover Water Works. Just to tell you how it's going to go.
Sure.
We'll start off with the goals and priorities.
Okay.
We may have some questions about those. And then we'll go through the summary detail. And then we'd like to talk at the end about critical items.
Okay.
Okay?
That sounds fine.
The floor is yours.
This one, hold on.
Yes, please speak into the mics of it. We don't get yelled at.
Okay. Under the Water Works, our goals list that you see in front of you, we've got six goals. Of course, one of the most important things is respond to emergency calls. A lot of it's related to our utilities group in terms of pipe breaks, things like that. We have a goal of within one hour during normal business hours, within two hours during non-business hours, and 90 percent of the time as far as the metric. One of the things obviously that involves with the CIP is the increasing of the reliability of our water and sewer infrastructure by upgrading facilities, and those are the items that we include in our CIP that we see are important to keep investing in that. Long-term plan for water production needs. We did a study looking at long-term needs. It was quite significant. One of the big things that will be part of that discussion that we get into is how the ongoing discussions the mayor's having with the county potentially for servicing areas outside of the city as far as reducing septic systems as part of cleanup of the Chesapeake Bay. So that had a big influence, and we'll see how that pans out because typically when we extend our services out sewer, we would also extend water at the same time. Water system valve exercise replacement program, as you know, our infrastructure is getting up there gray in ages. One of the things we look at when we get some of these construction projects, we'll go in and we'll try to exercise these valves, and either they do have somewhat closed, but you'll have some leakage, and that makes it harder to work on a repair. So as part of that, we want to institute a program where we're going around doing these, and then as a result of our results, a result of what we find, start replacing some of these valves that need to be done. It's one of those things, you don't need them until you need them.
Yeah. Are there sections that we anticipate we're going to find more than other sections?
The older sections.
The older sections.
Yeah, definitely.
So it's be similar to the stormwater?
Yes.
Yeah.
You'll run up in like the Newtown area.
Right.
We had problems with that intersection up there at Isabella Division at one time where we had a break. Unallocated potable water use. We've been making progress in metering a lot of the un-metered water uses within the city. That's something that historically was done where a lot of our fountains and monuments that's once through the zoo. So we're slowly putting meters in so we can get to our goal of reducing the amount of unallocated water. Obviously, it's always a chase where you're looking at, you know, somebody has a fire, how much water was used. We're working with the fire department on that, but it's these uses where, like I said, out here, the Peace Memorial, water goes in, the water goes out. And it makes it somewhat easier when they did that because you're just using the chlorinated water with the thing as opposed to a recirculation system which would have filters and everything else. So, but you're wasted, you have to track that water in accordance with MDE. Completion of wastewater treatment plant, obviously, working towards that end of the year is the goal with our contract. And that'll have, that is, I'll mention, is the transition between all the discussions we've had with construction of the plant and those costs to the transition to the cost of operating the plant, which will have an impact on us and our budget.
And we are also going to run tandem for a while, is my understanding?
This year is that transition that we part, we go from, from the old plant into the new plant. So we've had the budget a little higher in terms of chemicals and electric.
So those costs are in here?
Right.
Okay.
So that's until when we start transitioning to the new plant, you're going to have an imbalance, and we don't, all we got to do is make sure we have the money to keep going through that, and we can adapt from that after that. Priorities, water quality question responses, obviously. Continue education citizens on water use and quality. We do a water quality monitoring report that we have to do to report to our citizens on, you know, levels of metals and things, and publish that every year. We're getting ready to send that out, Mr. Mayor, so we'll update your letter to the citizens.
Excellent. Thank you, Mike.
Optimizing reliability and use of our existing facilities, that's something we're always looking at doing. Tradition in public works as you run it till it falls apart. Safety training, professional development opportunities continue, always a big thing with me in terms of training for our staff, not only to bring them up in terms of a career ladder, but the increased sophistication and the requirements of the federal agencies on how we treat our water and wastewater. It's important because there's a liability to the city, so we have to have well-trained staff. Best management practices, council and the mayor have been very good in using funding that we've had to upgrade our waste, our pump stations. We've got over 50 of them in the city because we lack slope to make water go downhill. So we have a big investment in that to make sure that when there is a problem at the plant, it's reported so staff can get out there to get, make the repairs as well as have equipment that's reliable. So we have a backup when a pump fails. Monitoring use, cost and effectiveness. As you know, with previous budget, I've done the different ways to try to utilize ways to manage costs, reduce costs where we can. One of the examples I'll mention right now is the lift truck replacement that's in our budget. That, the problem we have with some of the pumps and the pump stations is it's straining the, that truck, the lift crane to pull them out. A lot of times we get a pump, it's a submersible pump, and you try to get that in there. It's not only the weight of the pump kind of breaking it loose to get it to come up. That's put some strain and wearing out that truck. We want to replace that truck with a heavier duty dual truck with a heavier lift on it. But as a result of that, we also have a demand in terms of our stormwater management with the inlet nets that we put in and the stormwater grates where instead of using our loader to lift the grates off and clean them up, we did a demonstration about a year or so ago and brought that lift truck over from the wastewater plant, show how easy it was to pull the grates up and clean them, safer for the staff than doing that. By getting the new lift truck for the wastewater plant, we're going to transition that over there, do some upgrades on the chassis, very affordable rather than trying to replace that. So those are the kind of things, again, that truck, we'll keep using it and using it until completely wears out, and it's not worthwhile even trying to fix it. Preventing introduction to pollutants and administrative treatment works a lot. That's the work on our pre-treatment crew that we have, very efficient in terms of what we're doing in monitoring industries. I feel we have a good relationship with the industries, a significant industrial users in the city, and work really well with them to monitor that stuff. Any questions on those?
I have one.
Sure.
So the goals and the priorities that you have here?
Mm-hmm.
And the budgets that you're representing behind it, that is sufficient to meet your goals and objectives?
Yes. Yeah, we continue working with that.
Okay. Can we talk a little bit about, since there's been some changes and things, your work chart?
Yeah.
Anything that's significant?
The main issues with the work chart, with the transition, with the reorganization, basically, the utilities, the wastewater and water plant staff, pretty much the same. It's just, and I'm, am, they're responsible for them overhead. As a department head, I will continue to be with those departments. The most significant transfer changes is obviously me and my administrative assistant, Pat, going over to that department. So you've moved two people to that. The other things that we've asked for in terms of this budget this year is with the water plant, one of the problems they have is their shift schedule. Because they don't have a full shift for the night shift, they're constantly taking somebody, and one time they're on a night shift, one time they're not. And anybody that's ever worked a night shift, he knows how that's disruptive to your sleep schedule and everything. So Cory's been asking for that type of funding to stabilize that staff and provide better coverage at night, so we've had that. So that's the addition of additional operator to help out with that. And again, remember, we've got two plants that we're trying to staff with that. So we've asked for additional person there. As far as the wastewater plant, one of the things with the new plant is we had a study done by our consultant looking at our staff's needs in terms of projections with that. They've come back and recommended two new positions for them. One is associated with maintaining materials and supplies that we need to run the new plant. That is our, and also the introduction of Munis system where we've gotten rid of member City Works and putting that in so that we can create a work order type system to respond to repairs and breaks. So that is a person.
So you were not on Munis?
Was that?
You were not on Munis?
No, the City Works was something that was originally implemented to go citywide. The only division that really got into doing that was our utilities division, working with it. The problems, if you remember from the discussion with that, City Works was constantly making changes, and then all of a sudden everybody couldn't make, figure out how to do it. So we did a full evaluation and look at those two because in the meantime, Munis had, I'll call, up their game and did a lot of improvements in their system for the inventory module. Keith found opportunities for use in his departments as well as other departments in the city to utilize that. Plus, it was a lot easier to pull data into. So when you work out a work order system, well, you have labor costs and material costs. Well, the labor costs, we could pull right in from Munis because it's already in there. City Works, you had to enter and set up a schedule. So we're really excited about being able to do that, and that's going to be an important part, not only reintroducing with utilities, but the wastewater plant. And I've got ideas in the future how we can overall manage inventory between those three divisions and possibly the citywide. So that's the one thing. The other thing, person that we need is a technician, SCADA technician in terms of electronics that we need to do. As this plant goes to E and R, it's sort of what you call a law of diminishing returns. You keep squeezing that, when you first get that lemon, you squeeze, you get a lot of juice out of it, and when it's good, you have to squeeze it more and more. To get down to that, you've got to use a lot of analytical information, sensors, monitoring that requires a lot of maintenance. A lot of these sensors, you have reagents that you have to keep updating. So there's a significant need for someone to, a technician, to monitor, repair, keep those up to date. Along that line, I also like the idea of getting someone there that with the water plant on an as-needed basis, they may have need of that because they also have SCADA issues. So there's a potential there for sharing that. But it's an important part for the operators to be able to know how this plant's functioning in real time rather than waiting for a lab result to know how to make changes in it. So that's the other position that we've added with that. Now, along that line, we've tried, looked at where the location of our inventory person is, redoing one of the buildings that oversees the entrance to the plant. And with the end of construction, we proposed to eliminate our contract for security we've had over years. So that helps offset some of our costs for that side. So they'll be able to sit there, and if somebody comes in, there's a call-in, and they can observe the gate. Plus, with the bigger shifts we'll be going to at night, we'll have security, people on staff rather than just one person there. So those were ways we tried to find some balance in what we're doing. Okay?
Question on this, just this next year, during the transition period where we're going to be running simultaneously?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have enough people to make sure that happens without impacting safety or health?
Yes. One of the things that we want, that we're doing with this is getting our staff trained. There'll be a very large training schedule with the new equipment that's coming online. So we're making efforts to not only get our operators with their certificate for a class five, which is activated sludge type treatment, because we're changing the whole way we treat our wastewater, from a biofilm where it's an attached media to a suspended media. So they had to get a different certification. So they've, a lot of them have taken the courses to get ready. They can't actually get their certificate until they're actually operating the plant for a little period of time. But you've got the paper book, the bookwork out of the way to get that. And in addition, all those operators will be involved with on-training as manufacturers come in with that stuff. So we've got that. But getting those two people in this budget this year helps get us set up so we can move ahead. Okay?
Any other questions?
All right. If there's any question, there's the revenue section, which Keith puts a lot of that stuff together, the money man.
Do I have those, is those missing from here?
Yeah, like water sewer fund, I pulled them out.
What is it?
148.
Oh, we jumped.
Yeah, you gotta jump.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. I don't like that.
Okay?
Yep.
So if there's any questions, do you want to go on just cost or anything?
Can we do this? Oh, here it is. Well, I didn't have any questions on that. No notes on that one. Anybody have any questions on there?
Next page, I was, that was 154. We'll start getting into costs.
Keep going to the next one. Because that's water engineering.
So 154 is where we get into budget summary, we're looking at water treatment is the first one there. Total water brand, the water treatment plant, you can see some of the costs have gone up a little bit, obviously, the additional person, the 2 percent increases, and are the two main, the driving forces with that. And of course, we did do some cuts, the 4 percent reductions that the mayor had asked for in terms of operating costs.
Now, is this, there's no, according to this, there's under water branch, there's no capital, and it was 234 last year. Is that just a, there is no request or?
Yeah, the, the, do you want to go into those, kind of the request?
Well, just, I just have, I think, I think what it's going to end up being is just what we talked about before, where it may appear someplace else that there's.
Yeah. I mean, what I was going to do, if you want to go through that, then we can just touch on the essential items things, which.
Yeah, let's, let's go to, let's go to that.
Okay.
Because I think this, these sheets here can be confusing based on what we just talked about.
Okay.
Worth referencing, worth referencing Schedule B simultaneously to make sure you're not missing any of those capital projects.
Okay, I think I'm ready.
So.
Page 167.
Yep.
167. Yeah, I don't have that one printed out. My own little list. Maybe we just jump back and forth with the thing?
As far as?
The essential items.
Yeah. You want to see the CIP items from Schedule B, or you want to see?
The funded improvements.
That's the funded in projects or?
Yeah, I think what we're talking about is.
Here's general, and here's water sewer.
General.
Water sewer, right there? Good?
Maybe just go through that quick, and then I can put into perspective because it's not.
Make that a little bigger, too.
Yeah, Schedule B is probably the best.
167.
Yeah.
And apologize, one of the things we're trying to adjust is obviously Amanda's dealing with infrastructure type projects.
Yeah.
As opposed to, I'll be more involved in, like the lift truck kind of thing. So she may have more information you want to get there. But just running out the list quickly on that. Sewer infiltration and flow remediation, that's studies in terms of contractors working to reduce ionized. So that's an infrastructure type project. Replacement and distribution piping and valves, that's a budget that is in our utilities that we have. It's part of, shown in their budget for projects related to, just like I was talking about with valve replacement. We typically fund that. That's in our utilities. Park well field restoration, that says rejuvenation that we got to go through every once in a while. We get iron buildup on the, on the pump valve. So that's water treatment plant. Tank and reservoir mixing systems, the water plant. Again, these are infrastructure projects. The paleo treatment plant, roof improvements, that's that leaking improvement, you remember for the CIP over the filters. Pump station building improvements, just general improvements we need with the pump stations over at the park plant. Gear, electric gear replacement, CIP item again. Glen Avenue lift station, this is one of the critical lift stations that we've had in the CIP, again, infrastructure project. Sewer extension on Mount Herman Road, that's alternative to try to finally get the last two septic systems in the city taken care of. If you remember last year, the extension of water and sewer mains to out that area, which we had hoped originally was going to be done when that area was developed, would include those two properties. But the continuing problems with the septic system out there, the city actually goes out, pumps out the septic tanks to keep him going because he is in the city. We're just going to run a pressure sewer line out there and get him hooked up so it won't be water. So it's a lot more, it's expensive for two homes, but it solves a problem because ultimately responsible as a city.
Does that require a pump?
Yeah, we'd have to pressure, a little pressure pump. So once that area does get developed and we run the lines out, then we can abandon it. But it, we've got to solve that problem with that poor guy.
Okay.
The materials warehouse, security building, I've already referenced, that's the one where we're moving the inventory over there and then close to where we can do the security as well. Okay? That's, that's the sum of those. So really, those type items, Amanda, I've touched on those, but if you have any other questions, she handles the engineering budgets under the water and sewer.
Anything critical that you need that's not on here?
No, I think we've got a full plate. So those are, appreciate what we got. We've pretty much got most of what we asked for. It's just a matter now of getting it done.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
What improvements are being done on the Johnson Lake Dam?
The Johnson Lake Dam, that's an ongoing project that we've got with the resurfacing of the dam face and the replacement of the valve system. So that's all, it's an already funded project.
Okay, when was the last time it had any improvements?
Ooh. It's got to be 20 years, I think. I can get, I can ask and get a number for you. What happened with that one is you get with the overflow over the dam, there's a surface that goes over that, and over winters with freeze thaw, it pops that off and it just shaves it off. So we've even had discussions whether it's worth keeping it on there. But there's better technologies and adhesive mixes that we can kind of use to surface that. So, and then there's always the safety getting to the valve controls on that kind of thing. Okay? All right. I kind of touch on everything on those things?
Okay.
Okay. Getting back to 154, just to pick up where we left off. Okay. All right, so we talked about the water treatment total with additional person, the water branch, again, it's a slight decrease. I mean, we haven't given anything with staffing. There's a couple reorganizations where we did some reclassifications of individuals because we have it organized now where we have three teams of construction. There's a construction, two construction groups that would responded to breaks or anything, and they're cross-trained, they can do a water or sewer break. Originally, there was one for sewer and one for water, that didn't make sense. Then there's a third team that is not as big a staff as the other team, but can serve A to support either one of the teams for a major break, and two, that team also specializes in doing metering, vacuum, pressure flushing, jet flushing, televising of lines, route control now. So they've kind of become a specialty group, but they can also support it. Then we've got a group that handles our metering shop and everything on that. So what we wanted to do is bring those staff up so that those three teams are at the same grade classification. That helps through cross-training and work on that. Under water administration, it's pretty much Keith with your stuff. It's Keith's cut.
So we've termed it. That's an official term now. Keith's cut.
Sewer engineering, again, those are type of projects that Amanda will be having as far as infrastructure. One, page 155 is, again, sewer billing, and that's administrate, finance handles that. Then you have the wastewater treatment plant where we have the increases there that we've already talked about in terms of electrical, chemical costs, and the new positions that we've got associated with that. And then the sewer branch is the other end of utilities with the funding, and there's a slight decrease in that with utilities. So a lot of focus, obviously, as can be expected, is on the wastewater plant.
Yeah.
And helping out the water plant with some of those things. And the last page, 156, our pre-treatment program, pretty much static, no real changes there. So. Okay? I will say with the wastewater plant, back in 20, I think it was 2014, we had our consultant do estimates to look at what kind of operating costs we were going to have with the new plant at that time. And one of the things that came out is that our electrical costs will rise significantly, and that's assuming we aren't getting rate increases, which we just found out from our rate, our energy study, that DPL got a transmission cost increase effective April 4th, I think it was. We got our energy report that Jennifer sent in. We have to deal with those kind of things. But we were going from.
The microphones pick up my heavy sigh.
Pardon me?
The microphones pick up my heavy sigh.
Yes.
My exasperated sigh.
Was, they were projecting our electric power costs to go from 857,000 to 1.4 million. And that's because of the pumping, the air that we have to inject into these systems to do it, to get that. Now, our chemical costs, which is the other big component, we got projected to go from 1 million to 876,000 in terms of cost. And these were budgetary type things at the time, looking at those numbers. And that's where that transition from lesser chemical costs, right now using more chemicals to less chemical, and from less electric to more electric during this transition, that we have to try to give ourselves a little buffer on that.
Are we going to have enough data based on the two systems running simultaneous to be able to build, to be able to get good enough data to decide whether the projections are correct?
For the, for the next budget?
Yeah.
Yes, I expect that. We're looking, what the plant has to do, it has to start meeting limits. So before you meet limits, there's a, there's a transition where you start inoculating the flow, getting the bio in there, and the plants start running. So latter half of the year, we'll be running with, with the newer plant, and we'll start getting that kind of data. Because then what happens is the blowers are running, the pumps are running, so you're really get a feel for your electrical costs that we can monitor them, and starting the chemical costs. One of the things with chemical that we'll have to transition a little bit to see is, when we were originally doing the design for the plant, they were looking at replacing the dragon incinerator. And when I got here, everybody said how bad the other one was, and I said, why are we building another one? So we went to the post-line treatment process, which I had some experience designing some of those plants up in Pennsylvania. So I took them to Cambridge and Ocean City where they do that process. So that's going to give us some real good options for disposal of sludge, other than the landfill if we want to, because you don't have to permit the site that you're placing it on anymore. But what you do is you have. But what you do is you have purchase of what they call a quick line to react with the solids, to heat it up and destroy the pathogens that will have to build into that. So with the treatment plant process now, because it's, you're going to that extra measure, you're going to be generating more sludge, which requires some chemicals, which is going to be the line component to that. And that's going to take a little time to flesh out as we start generating more material. So that's a little bit of unknown, and again, that's where you're, our first purchase to fill the silo for line. You know, we'll have to do that this year, where, so you have that first initial. And the list of chemicals that we, we deal with the plant is, a lot of different things that go on there. Polymers and milk of magnesium, we actually use that, si- si-ol. It's a, it's a magnesium product.
If you run low, you can come to the line.
Yeah, so any upset stomachs. So if you have an upset stomach, we use milk of magnesium at the wastewater.
Looking ahead, Mike?
Yes.
Is there any decommissioning that's going to have to happen to the old equipment?
There, there will be some. A lot of the biggest issue that we have was the towers with the media. And the media basically has crushed itself. So that's one of the debates we have with the contractors. They didn't anticipate the effort of pulling that out. So that'll be something, argument. And then we're reusing the, the, two of those towers to, for the filters and whatnot. So the contractor, one is a function of limited space that they had, because originally we were trying to buy more land with the new one, because we weren't able to do that. We've reutilized a lot of the facilities at the existing plant for the new stuff. The towers is a real good example. There's some demolition of the old buildings. Chlorination system, which was an old system, we're going to ultraviolet light. So there's things that are there, but it's not like we're going to have a big, big piece of equipment that we could.
Right, that's my.
The one, probably the biggest piece was the dragon thing. And nobody wanted that, and we ended, practically have to cut it up just to get it out of the dang building.
So the, there's, you don't think there's going to be any significant dollar impact in this year's budget?
For, when you say.
Getting rid of.
Oh, getting rid of stuff?
Yeah.
Well, the contractor has responsibility, anything he tears out, he has to get rid of.
Oh, okay, so it's on his nickel.
We have first hit. I thought you were referring to anything that we decommissioned that we could try to resell or something like that.
Okay, no, I'm worried about expense.
Oh, no, that's all part of it.
Okay.
Yeah, basically, there's a salvage clause, and that says, anything the contractor's doing, he's got to take care of getting rid of, unless we make a claim that we want it, that it had some value to it. Okay?
Yeah. I think I should have probably asked, remember when we had the personnel, see with the split now? I'm not sure which, which you refers to. There was a question about the guys who were on call.
What on earth?
Yeah. Remember the phone call, it's?
Okay, so it was, I guess it was, they were, one of the things that they were looking at was compensation for on-call status. So some of the smaller departments have a shorter.
List.
Rotation time. Because I guess there's fewer guys in there, so some of them, where if you had more available personnel, you know, where maybe somebody was on-call once a month. But there's guys who are on-call once a week, I guess, maybe, I can't remember which.
Okay. It was.
I think part of it was, is I think the, the bigger thing was being on-call, where there's no compensation, where. If you're on-call.
Right.
Like for the weekend, where you can't really go anywhere, you, you can't, you know.
That's what it was.
You're stabilized.
You don't, you don't, you're still, you're not working, but you have to be.
Right.
On work-ready.
A minute, a minute, ma'am.
Yeah.
So if you're somewhere enjoying yourself, you have to leave and.
I think the other thing that we, that was mentioned was that the other, and I'm just checking, just giving you the. There are other departments of public works that get paid or comp time for that on-call status. It's just something that came up, so I just wanted to be aware.
It's like thirty-five to forty hours.
Well, as far as the, one of the things when someone does get called in, they're, they get a three-hour minimum.
Right, I asked that question, they said that.
That's important, so you don't come in and say, okay, well, you had to flip a switch and turn around, drive back home. And then also, you, the utility division would get compensated for the mileage cost to drive in, because they don't have take homes. And the service center used to not have that, and I explained why they didn't have it. And with the transition, now they started doing that for when they get calls in, for stuff like that.
Now, the call-in straight timer OT?
If they're, if they're over their forty hours.
If they're over the forty hours, they get OT.
Absolutely.
They didn't say that, did they?
What did they say?
If you're, well, you have to.
If it's over forty hours, they get, the time, you get overtime.
Oh, sure.
I thought, I thought the guy that was here said he didn't get that.
No, he, they did, they did say he got it.
Did they?
He was just saying that.
I misunderstood.
I think their concern was just being on-call, the biggest concern was being on-call.
It says compensation for on-call.
Some kind of stipend or something like that, I mean, I know the one thing that, that I get a lot of feedback for is where if they have to come into, in that week, and there's a holiday during that week. Way the manual's set up is that.
Holiday doesn't count.
Right, and that doesn't seem fair.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think it would go a long way as far as them, because I'll get that question too, because is, the question is, well, is this an emergency or is this a scheduled event? If it's a scheduled event, you don't get the overtime regardless, and making that kind of call. If they do, if they take vacation or something like that, that's a different story. But a holiday is a holiday, so. And it hurts a lot because they come in that weekend and they know, boop, that's it.
Well, the other thing they were saying is that you schedule, they can't plan.
They can't plan.
So you have a holiday and you go, well, I can't plan because I got to be home because I'm on-call and that's an issue. But, you know, that's, that's part of the job.
It is, it is. And, you know, I, I can't, obviously, none of us can say we can have this huge reserve of people that can go in a lot, so we don't have the shifts.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's, that's something that's certainly worth discussion as far as some stipend with them. But I'm not sure that other departments or divisions within public works are getting.
No, they're talking about in other locales.
Oh, 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 okay, that makes sense then. I couldn't tell you that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Mols?
I have one.
You're not allowed to.
As far as the electric, do we have enough contingency in there to cover the increase that's being proposed by Mr. Anderson? Or do we need to add something?
Well, that just came out yesterday.
Yeah.
And if you, you got Jennifer's email.
I haven't, I haven't read, I saw it, I haven't.
I think it's, Mr. Anderson was projecting like a four percent, I think is what they were saying. Again, that's just the transmission cost, it's not the generating cost. So how that relates to what percentage overall is our electric cost, I don't know at this point.
So I need to probably put a line item in and include it.
It may be something we have to revisit. I know, you know, we're seeing some budget transfers we've got to do, projecting the end of the year.
No, I'm, yeah, I'm talking about FY eighteen.
No, I know, I know, but I'm seeing some things we've got to deal with now, because it took effect supposedly April fourth.
Was that, was that the final approval?
Well, I'm not sure, you know where that's.
They do, they do this.
Soon as they get one, then they ask for another one.
Right.
And this is related to the reliability improvements they've been making.
Yeah.
Stuff that they've been required to do.
Right.
So that impact, I don't know, Keith.
I was just thinking, you said it's about a million dollars, so four percent would be like forty thousand. So we would, if you don't have forty thousand built in, we probably need to add forty thousand.
Right, but again, the four percent is the four percent of the transmission cost. Percentage of the transmission cost to the overall cost is another percentage. So it may not be, it could be one and a half, two percent for a lot of them. But I, but again, this just came out yesterday. Because I have some budget transfers I got to work out, and I was waiting for the third quarter report to see what Mr. Anderson was projecting, so that I only had to ask for one.
Well, I'll make a line item just to make sure we, we revisited, reached a conclusion, so we don't, you know, don't have a problem.
One of the things that was, when we talked about all this electricity type thing, was there was the interest in trying to develop the American Tower site to a solar site. And we weren't able to work that contract agreement out, and from what I understand now, the economics of the solar farms has changed. So that was one of the things that we were playing with to try to see if we could offset some of those costs.
While that's true, with the ever increasing costs of buying power from Delmarva Power, I imagine the equation keeps changing and getting closer and closer to being better for us. I, I don't know, it's worth still exploring.
Yeah, I think some of the stuff that Jennifer's, yeah, been looking at to see where, one of, one of the issues was always nice, was finding a flat spot where we had, you know, can put a ground mount type thing. The tower site was attractive, but then we had the original lease with American Tower. You had to kind of keep them satisfied with what you were also putting on that site. And there were some conditions there that weren't, that not the normal type conditions. For example, you know, if there was ice buildup on the tower and the ice broke off and a thaw and fell on the solar cells, is American Tower liable for repairing those?
Well, I think there's also, I mean, there is a, there's a model that says you can put the, you can put the solar farm anywhere.
Yeah.
And then you sell the, and then you get credits for the, for the amount that you sell, even though it's remote. So you can use those credits for like, for the wastewater treatment.
There, there is, the best thing that works for you is if you're right by the site, because then it's meter to meter. You can, you don't have that transmission cost that you have to absorb if it was a remote site. The other problem we run into with the remote sites is we looked at a solar site over near Snow Hill. They'd have put an RFP out for coming in it. And the problem there is they, their upgrades at Delmarva required for their transmission station, substation, were too expensive to make the project work. Because you have to have that feed going into a main line. So your remote sites have to be located close to a transmission line that you can tap into, if it's, obviously, we're looking at significant generating capacity. And then what the impact is to the, to the transmission system. So it starts out as a nice, easy idea and then gets complicated, as it usually does.
Yep.
All right?
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mols, appreciate it. Have a good day.
Me too.
And I'd like to, I'd like to come over and see the, when we get close, I'd like to come over and.
Oh, absolutely, well, I'm looking forward to the tours. We, we had a young interpreter, or enter.
Entrepreneur.
Entrepreneurs group that originally wanted to go to the plant, but it's chaos over there. So we were concerned about safety, but they went, so they went to the paleo plant and they loved it, so. Yes, the wastewater plant will be doing a lot of tours and may have to beef up our electric carts.
A little bus.
Yeah, a little mini bus.
They make electric bus carts, you know.
We'll get the concessions thing going too.
Got to pay for it somewhere.
Do you want me to, I'll get Amanda to come up to you there?
Yeah, is she next?
Infrastructure.
Okay.
Individual.
Keith will take another five minutes, how's that?